Good afternoon and welcome to the January 28, 2025 Strategic Planning Committee Meeting. My name is Brenda Wolf and I'm the Chair of this committee. At this time, I'll ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Good afternoon, Rita Montoya, Board Member at Large.
Good afternoon, Natalie Zimmerman, Representing District 2.
I'm going to ask our staff to introduce themselves.
Shannon Paddyfoot.
James Penske.
And for the benefit of our new board members, I'm going to ask our MCPS staff to introduce themselves at this time.
Good afternoon, I'm Stephanie Sharon, Chief of Strategic Initiatives. Before we go to the others, we will have another group coming up halfway through and we'll make sure they introduce themselves too.
Absolutely.
Good afternoon, I'm John Lansman, Executive Director for Strategic Initiatives.
Good afternoon, Malika Brown, Elementary English Language Arts Supervisor.
Good afternoon, Keisha Addison, Director of Shared Accountability.
Thank you. So at our last Strategic Planning Committee meeting in September, we focused on Pillar One of our strategic plan, which is academic excellence. And we did that by reviewing the longitudinal literacy data as measured by the evidence of learning. We also heard from our K-3 literacy field test that aims to develop processes and procedures for partnering with parents, caregivers to support reading, improvement through clear and culturally responsive communication that fosters collaboration and enhances student literacy outcomes. We also received an update on Phase One of the new strategic plan. Today, we're going to continue the conversation about the strategic planning process. We're going to hear about Phase Two and Phase Three. You might remember that we told you that we were doing a five-phase strategic planning process this year. Additionally, we will be doing a deep dive into our current strategic plan, Pillar Number Two, which is well-being and family engagement. We'll be discussing chronic absenteeism and disproportionality and suspensions. Lastly, we wanted to share an update on the K-3 Literacy Project. Now, we're not going to go into that very deeply because that was actually covered at the last board meeting, and you can go on board docs and review that and review the video from the last meeting. So at this time, I'm going to ask Stephanie Sharon. Sharon, you know, I just insist on it being French. I do. It's Stephanie Sharon, but I insist on it being French. You know, it really sounds good that way, doesn't it? So go ahead, Stephanie, take it over.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf, Ms. Zimmerman, and Ms. Montoya. It is the struggle of having two first names for my first and last name. Thank you very much. If we could pull the slide deck up, please, and go to the next slide, please. So as Ms. Wolf indicated today, we are going to do a very brief update on the literacy field test.
There's one thing that I forgot, and that's to see if anyone had any questions on the informational summary from the last meeting. I think they're kind of new, no questions, so I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So again, we're going to have a brief update on the literacy field test. We're going to talk about the Phase Two part and Phase Three of our strategic planning process. Because we did acknowledge that we have two new members, we're going to do a little bit of a recap on what happened in Phase One so that we can make sure that everybody's on the same page. We will then switch over, as Ms. Wolf said, to our discussion in alignment with Pillar Two of well-being and family engagement, to focus in on chronic absenteeism and update on that, where we are and our disproportionality in suspension. So, without any further ado, I am going to turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Malika Brown.
Good afternoon again. So yes, I just wanted to be able to provide a brief update on where we were with the field tests. And thank you for sharing with the public that we did go through this in our last strategic planning meeting, as well as that the materials are available online that they can review. And so just as a quick refresher, we do have five schools that are participating in the field test, as you can see here. We're partnering with Rachel Carson Elementary School, Ronald McNair, Snowden Farms, June Lellic, at Broad Acres, and Weller Road. And we've been working closely with the schools to identify the feasibility around when we're looking at ensuring that students are receiving the literacy support that they need and that families are being regularly communicated with and are really partnering with the schools as we build out their plan. This is also a part of what's going to be the expectation as we move to implement the comprehensive K-3 literacy policy. There are specific components of the policy that will be required, and so pulling those two things together, the field tests and the policy, to ensure that we have a very strong system of supports for our students. And so where we are right now with the field tests, we're working with the schools on ensuring that their students' intervention goals are measurable and that they are reflective of what students are doing as part of the intervention. So we've actually done this with all of the reading specialists because we felt that it was something that's beneficial as we move into completing our middle-of-the-year winter assessments. And so as they wrap up the assessments, we're going to move forward with when we're identifying students or going through also a process of looking at data to be able to identify needs for students. And then in identifying those needs, what are those measurable goals? So within the course of this intervention, what would be a goal that we want them to be able to meet by the end of the intervention term? We're also continuing to work with schools on ensuring, and this is an expectation for all schools too, that they are regularly monitoring progress. So between the assessment windows, that they are continuing to collect data frequently to determine how students are responding to that additional support. And the other piece that we're continuing to build out is the communication with families. The schools have provided feedback. We were able to meet with families from the field test schools as well as staff, and we heard the different ways of communication that families would like, and so working to build that out. Email, regular communication were some of the things that really came out, and so what would that regular communication be as a partnership in developing and providing information around how their students are doing with literacy? The other piece that we were able to consider for our next steps as an area that we might want to continue to explore and have our field test schools do is the importance of having just an intervention and enrichment block. Right now, all five of the schools, they do have a designated time for, to be able to provide additional support, and so, you know, just looking at the impact of having that time for students. And again, the biggest piece is that continued ongoing communication with families and caregivers in providing the information on how students are doing, and then also utilizing, we shared at the last meeting with our curriculum, there are parent resources, and utilizing those resources to be able to support students at home.
I just have one question, and then I'm going to let my two new board members, because even though I said we weren't going to talk about this, they might have at least one question. Well, maybe I have two. I thought that when we started this, this was a five-week sort of trial and that we would have some actual results, but I'm kind of hearing you say where we're still building out. So I'm a little bit confused as to what we are actually doing. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, you mentioned that they have dedicated time for additional support as part of this literacy project, which I think is very interesting because as I visit the schools, one of the things I'm hearing from the reading teachers and specialists is that CKLA is not working for our multilingual children because they can't read in the third grade, and that there is no time built in to go back and go over stuff because they have to adhere to a schedule. So if you could just speak to that a minute, because I think that'll be a key component, maybe to making some change to help improve the scores we're seeing for our multilingual children.
Okay. To the first question, it did start out as a short term, but as we were collecting the feedback from schools and listening to the best practices, and then with the release of the literacy policy, knowing that there's going to be some things that we have to implement system-wide, we had to expand on it. So not just looking at having culturally responsive communication styles with our families, but also ensuring that we really have a strong structure to be able to provide literacy support for students. And to your second question around the dedicated time, so what some schools were able to do is to find a dedicated block for enrichment or intervention. The way that the CKLA program is designed, a lot of it is at whole class, and we do have students in grade levels that are not yet ready to access the curriculum independently. And so there are structures that are in place that teachers can employ to support them in accessing grade level, because we know what the research shows, like the importance of grade level. When we start to bring it down and not give students access to the grade level, then what does that mean for, you know, they're going to continue to fall behind. But what we are looking at, and we do, is how do we create dedicated space within the schedule, the daily schedule for enrichment and intervention?
Well, I hear what you're saying, but I'm not sure that that's clear to all of our, particularly our elementary school reading teachers and specialists, because their belief is that they're required to implement this within a certain timeframe and that that is not allowing them time to go back and revisit. So I'd like to have some further discussion on that, and we'll talk about where we could fit that into a meeting. So at this time, I'm going to turn to my fellow board members. I'm going to call on Ms. Zimmerman first.
Thank you. I actually, Ms. Wolf, had a really similar question about how we're looking at our scheduling with the CKLA curriculum, and I'm wondering, as you're talking about how we're creating our all-school schedules, you know, how are we supporting our administrators and their instructional leadership teams when they're creating those all-school schedules to implement those times? I think we got at that answer a little bit, but I agree, it's something that we definitely need to keep considering. I do have another question about, I noticed that most families indicated that they would prefer to get information via text or email, and both of those are available through the Remind app, right? So what supports are we giving to the schools to help get caregivers and families connected to Remind so that they can get that information easily?
Actually, our caregivers in our community don't have to do anything to sign up for Remind. That's the beauty of the platform. So they don't have to download anything, they just need to have a phone number. So we don't actually have to do anything to connect, as long as we initiate the connection, they can respond as appropriate.
Okay. So then, like, our caregivers are aware, part of, from a classroom perspective, part of the struggle that I faced would be updating emails that had happened frequently and updating phone numbers, that I have a feeling our schools could use some support in that sense, that if this is how our families want information, that then maybe they need support in updating that information in parent view, that there's some disconnect happening there if it should be so automatic. So that'd be something, I'm wondering if we're giving that kind of support or if that's something we could start implementing.
I definitely think that we can always do better, right? I do know many schools, and I'm putting my former principal hat on, that when you run into numbers that are not working, usually the well-being teams are organized in a way where you're reaching out, trying to find out, trying to update as appropriate. Only certain people in the school have the ability to be able to update those records. It's not everybody for a reason. And yes, parents can update that on their own too, and I do see that as an opportunity for us to do that better as far as communicating how they can do that, because I think sometimes what we see is that people don't update it because they're like, well, I don't know how to, I don't know how to do, you know, unless they're talking to a person. So that's definitely an opportunity for growth.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for being here and for getting all of the information together to present this to us. I really do appreciate it. I have children in elementary school, so I rely on these communications and these scores and things that get sent home so I know what's going on. And so that brings me, I guess, to my question about the, and it's number four on the update, caregivers and parents and the resources they needed at home. So I know that for my third grader, for example, I get this sheet that says this is what we're going to be reading about in CKLA this week, and here's some words that we can practice. And for my child, that might be fine because they can read at grade level, we don't have challenges in that area. But for example, a child like Ms. Wolf was mentioning where they're not reading at grade level, so their parent then is getting this sheet home, and mine comes home in English, and I'm sure most of them do, because my understanding is that's a challenge we have in our availability of those types of materials, right, going home in other languages. So how is a parent supposed to help their child who needs support or intervention for reading, who isn't at grade level, but all they're given is this grade-level sheet explainer? And then also, do we as a school system have online resources, worksheets, or games, which is what the parents mentioned, it would be helpful at home, so that our individual teachers or school administrators who have so much on their plate already are not having to think of these things or how they can get them there, and then also with instructions for parents to know even what to do with them? Some parents on their own can't think of how to help their child in these areas.
So that's a great question, two parts. One, we do have curriculum resources that are available online. We have videos of the Read Alouds that are part of the curriculum that parents can have access to, and schools have that information to be able to share with our community, and it's on the website. But you're right, that doesn't address for the students who are reading below grade level or significantly below grade level. One of the challenges, what you're speaking to, the resources coming home would be tied essentially to an intervention. If a student is reading significantly below grade level, the expectations that they are participating in an intervention, and those are the types of resources that we would want to go home. Some of our intervention programs right now just don't have those additional resources. They're really, you know, when I'm thinking about Orrin Gillingham, the way, the design of it, we don't have those sort of like supplemental resources to go home. We are in the process of a request for proposal for a new intervention, and having those additional resources and materials to support families at home was part of the request. And so ensuring that, you know, if a student is going to be in intervention, here's what they're doing in the classroom, or in that intervention group, and then here's what we can provide at home as well. But that is an area that we can continue to grow.
Okay, we're going to move on, but what I will ask is that we get an update on this too at the next meeting, because my question is, these five schools were already successful schools. They were doing fairly well to start with. So when are we going to be able to scale up and use some of what we're learning on the schools that really need it? We'll talk about that next time, though. Thank you. Go ahead.
Great, thank you, Ms. Wolf. Keep forgetting that I have authority here to click my own slides. So we're going to transition now to give you an update on the strategic plan, and we're going to do a little bit of history so that we can get everybody on the same page with our new members in order to move forward. One of the questions that we get from our community, and we're getting it, we get it a lot, is what is different? What is going to be different about this? How is this going to be different than what you've done before? And I want to preface this by saying that we gained a lot of information from the anti-racist audit and action plan that was developed, and through the learnings of what we've been managing over the last several years since we built our last strategic plan. And the biggest difference you're going to see today, there's going to be two differences. The first difference is the how. How we're building this plan is grounded in what we have learned about what our community is asking for and needs through the anti-racist audit. The anti-racist audit has served as the foundation of how we have developed this plan. Secondly, what I want to acknowledge as well is, not only the process, but when you're thinking about the product of what we're trying to develop of our strategic plan, what you see on that screen is what we're trying to accomplish, okay? You've heard it when we talk about curriculum updates. You hear it all the time. We know, research tells us what are the best practices for various different things. Our problem as a system Our problem as a system is oftentimes the implementation piece. Superintendent shared that quote in August, "Your organization is perfectly designed to get the results you're getting." And that directly mirrors what the anti-racist audit says in almost the very first pages. You guys basically know what you have, you know what the best practices are. We have seen them, we have observed them, but you are fragmented. And as a result of that fragmentation, that's why we're continuously just getting the same results. So the goal of our strategic plan is to think about the systems and structures that need to change for our district so that we can implement the best practices that we know exist. So again, you've all seen these slides, even our newer members have seen, have seen this slide before, but this is really how we've been opening up every single conversation about the strategic plan. And the reason that we open it up is because this is one of the different approaches that we have taken to the strategic planning process that was actually not as well thought out at the last strategic plan. We need to make sure that we are designing the systems and structures that I mentioned before to address the needs of the students that we have today, not just demographically, but also the society with which we are, they are currently living in, right? I bet if we look at some of the systems and structures that we have, and this is what we've been looking at, some of those systems and structures don't look that different from 1970. I know, Ms. Zimmerman, you probably can attest to the fact that planning time hasn't changed, for instance, in how we organize our school day around giving the opportunity for planning in like 50 years, right? But think about the needs of what our students have and what our staff have, and that is a structural barrier, for instance, preventing us from getting the results that we need. So one of the questions, overarching questions, and this is where we've really tried in the strategic planning process, to get people to be thinking differently and not just doing the same old, same old that we always have in MCPS, which is a challenge to do, is that we've started off all of our work sessions in engagement with this questions. What are the systems and the beliefs and values that uphold these systems that must be in place for MCPS to effectively implement the best practices with consistency? Again, it's not about not knowing what the best practices are, it's about how we actually have to implement them and what we need to change to do that, that is really the focus of this strategic plan. And again, and I put this up here, and I'm not going to read this slide to you, but this is the established definition that we launched a few years ago when we launched the anti-racist audit work, of what anti-racism, how it is defined. And I think what's important to acknowledge here is that anti-racism and being anti-racist is a process, not necessarily a final destination. What I mean by that is it involves a constant state and commitment to reflection and change and growth, and that is what we're trying to reflect through this process of strategic planning. So our timeline, we shared this at the last strategic planning committee, it's also on our website. You will see here that the arrow shows you that we're currently dead center into our Phase III process. But we started off in August to September taking a very different approach to what we've done before. We engaged over 200 members of our community, and we focused on, you know, various different leadership members of our community, both externally and internally, to do a few things. And I'm going to share what those questions are that we asked in just a moment. But the main focus was, what are the skills that kids are going to need now, in this very different world, and what are the systemic issues that we need to overcome? That's very different than saying, well, what are the best practices to meet this particular group of students? We created a Phase II report, and then in November, we had a Phase II work session with over 180 stakeholders from around the district. It included higher ed partners, it included business community, it included our internal folks, external teachers, et cetera. And they engaged in a process of root cause analysis to get to those systems and structures, and then they identified draft approaches to address the systemic barriers for what we're dealing with, as well as accountability structures. That report is going to be released very soon. The board will get a copy of it probably by the end of the week. We are now in Phase III. This is where our focus is on creating our academic, social, and operational goals in alignment with our state mandates, district priorities, and all of the feedback we have heard. Once we complete the drafts of this, and you're going to see some of the drafts today of the goals component, is we're going to go back out to our community members to say, did we get it right? That's what we heard in the anti-racist audit. You ask us for feedback, we don't see the end result, so then we don't even know if you used what we said or what it looks like. And then the goal, I know it says June, July, but I do believe we actually have an earlier goal of May, to finalize the strategic plan with the full Board of Education. Then the hard work begins, and the hard work is the implementation, right, of actually turning a strategic plan into strategic action. This slide, and I just kind of highlighted this already, but just so that you can see visually, these are all the stakeholder groups that comprised the Phase I feedback process. The Phase I report is also found on our website, strategic planning website, if you Google that, it'll come up. These are all the groups that we worked with. These were the main questions that we asked, and this is how the report is organized. And then we took the information from these questions, and particularly that first one in green, what are the greatest challenges or issues that we have to address and overcome, to really think about how we then build out and engage in a root cause analysis. And again, that Phase I report that was created and compiled by shared accountability is found on our website. I'm now going to turn it over to Mr. Landsman, who will go into the Phase II work that we did.
Good afternoon. As Ms. Sharon said, the whole process for putting this together has been different. So after we got all that feedback and created the Phase I report, we invited about 180 students, staff, community partners, academics, to a full-day work session in November. And we took the themes from the report, and we created seven work teams, and folks worked in those work teams that you see here. Those were the themes that came out of the Phase I report. And the difference is, we, as Ms. Sharon said, we didn't ask them, what are the best practices for teaching students receiving special education services or Hispanic students? What we asked was, what are the systems and structures that need to be in place to ensure that we're getting to the best practices, that we can actually implement those? So we're going to explain a little bit more about Phase II, but if we go on to the next slide, we have a quick video just to describe that day.
And consulting. So today is the kickoff of our Phase II planning for the strategic plan. This is part of a year-long effort that we're engaging our community around building out our next strategic plan. So we have brought together here today over 150 stakeholders, from community members to higher ed partners, business partners, staff, and students, in order to explore the question of what systems and structures need to be in place so that MCPS can effectively meet the needs of all students. That is our core critical question for today.
In terms of the professional growth standards, I think they're on point. But what I think we need to change is the content, in terms of the content being a lot more culturally responsive to the daily reality of the diverse spectrum of students that we have here at Montgomery County Public Schools.
I think it's important to be here for the community. I think every voice matters, and this planning of different teachers, different schools, I think is really smart. I think everyone's voice matters, so even like the smallest opinion can make a vast difference in the future.
We are an institution really dedicated to ensuring the success of all students through that lens of equity and anti-racism. And this plan is going to be designed to address all of the needs of our community and serve as our North Star.
So we keep talking about systems and structures, and we wanted to make sure that everyone has the same understanding of what we mean by systems and structures. So for us, systems mean the processes and methods that guide how the work is done. They include the policies and procedures and the communications channels. The structures are the organization setup, the way people and departments are arranged to support its mission. That includes the hierarchy, who reports to whom, the levels of responsibility, the teams or departments, and the roles and responsibilities. So when we keep saying that we need to address the systems and structures, these are the things that we're talking about, both the processes, the methods, and how we're set up as a system, and how we work together as a system. The other part that we want to kind of explain is how we've done some root cause analysis. We can't address the system if we don't understand what are the systemic barriers that we're trying to address. And so when we did the anti-racist audit, we used this method, the systems iceberg root cause analysis method. It's a way of really digging deeper into what are the systems, the structures, and the mental models that are getting in the way of us actually doing what we know we can do in the system. And so at the top, you can do this with any issue. So emergent multilingual learners, for this one, is an example. That's what we put on, at the top for this particular example. The examples that we're going to give you can't come right out of the Phase II report. The next level down, below the surface, are the patterns. Here are some of what our committee, our subcommittee talked about. EML students have lower proficiency rate than other non-EML students in English language and math and science. EML Grade A proficiency level of science has been much lower than the general population, and Grade V proficiency level of materials has been much lower than the general population. So those are the patterns that we see. Sometimes we stop at the patterns, and that's where we start trying to address the problem. So we're digging deeper and going to the systems and structures that we just discussed. Here are just a few of what they discussed, what they came up with. Our professional development lacks consistency amongst the different structures to develop the teachers and the administration. So that goes back to our anti-racist audit as well. We haven't been consistent in how we do things. Structures for parent involvement, parent engagement favor English speakers. We just, Ms. Montoya brought that up a few minutes ago in our last presentation. And then the regulations set for professional learning by the unions for an amount of time are a barrier, this is what the group said, to doing the professional learning that we need to do. So those are some of the systems and structures that we need to address. And then, as we discussed, we have to dig even deeper to the mental models. And these, again, are, what are the beliefs and the values that uphold these systems and structures year after year after year? So these are just some of the examples that they gave. The belief that not all students are worthy of our investment, and only some teachers are responsible for language development. There was a lot of discussion about how it can't just be the EML teachers who are, you know, who are helping our students learn. So this is just an example of every group that we showed you before during that work session went through a process of identifying the patterns, then digging deeper, identifying the systems and structures, and digging deeper, and then what are, identifying the mental models that need to be addressed. So when they started looking at the approaches, they have to, those approaches aren't just looking at the patterns, but they're getting down to the systems and structures and the mental models. Next slide, please. So Dr. Addison is going to go through some of what was heard and what's in the Phase II report.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So as was shared, the themes of the work from the engagement with Phase I community members led to vested interest for those in those seven workgroup areas. And the first phase of the process, as was shared, involved participants identifying patterns reflected in data and resource documents relevant to their topic, considering what trends or repeated outcomes were apparent. And so each workgroup received a brief on their topic area to read prior to convening that also included district-level data for the specific area of focus. And so each of the seven workgroups identified root causes that Mr. Landsman shared, and they perceived to impact their group. This slide details the themes that were across all seven workgroups. And so however, when you read the reporting, get that soon, you may see other themes that one workgroup identified that was not elevated by others. For example, while participants on the Black or African-American workgroup identified a number of themes on this slide, they also identified inadequate mental health and well-being support that was elevated for students in this group. Additionally, for participants on the Hispanic-Latino workgroup, graduation rates was a theme that was elevated that you don't see here. And I share these to remind us that this slide does not tell the full story of the collaborative conversations and detailed recommendations of those who dedicated their day to support this process. Now back to the cross-common themes that you see on this slide. Lack of representation was identified, where participants across multiple workgroups identified a lack of diverse representation among educators, leaders, and role models in school. This lack of, excuse me, this lack of representation was purported to impact a sense of belonging for students, especially students from historically marginalized groups. For the cross-themed group of cultural disconnected engagement challenges, communication strategies and approaches to family and community engagement were identified as frequently lacking cultural responsiveness, thus fostering mistrust and engagement. The third cross-group theme I will highlight here is misaligned structures and practices. With this one, aspects of curriculum instruction, instructional approaches, and scheduling were highlighted as failing to meet the needs of our diverse students. Next slide. Transitioning from root causes, if you think back to the systems iceberg process, is moving to approaches. Participants were asked to, in the first phase of the process, identify system issues and ways that we can address those or approach those issues to bring about change. Similar to the previous slide, this slide represents the cross-group themes identified, but there are other thematic topics identified from individual workgroups. For example, the participants on the workgroup focused on multilingual learners identified the systemic issue that not all believe that all students can achieve. And with this, some of the approaches they identified included staff encouragement and engagement, as well as simplified communication. For participants on the workgroup focused on students with disabilities, a systemic issue of having high expectations for students receiving special education services was identified, and one approach included creating opportunities for students to build confidence, self-advocate, and engage in peer-to-peer interactions. And for this cross-group themes, for the cross-group themes on this slide, I will highlight two of them. First, culturally responsive education, where groups emphasize the value and importance of culturally relevant teaching and incorporating culturally sustaining instruction that values the backgrounds and the diverse student population that we serve. The next I will highlight is, of course, accountability and data-driven decision-making. The need for intentional structures that encompass a data-informed approach to data monitoring was elevated across all groups. And although not in the report that you will soon receive, I will take the time to emphasize the importance of data literacy, which is the capability to gather, analyze, convey, and apply diverse data measures to drive continuous improvement within this learning organization, along with data use, which is intentionally converting data into meaningful insights and actionable steps to enhance all aspects of the organization. And these two serve as the foundation for our progress in this area. Next slide, please. So we've discussed root causes and approaches, and now on to what the group shared as methods to hold us accountable. Many of the themes identified probably are not surprising. They are a lot of what we have discussed and continue to discuss as areas of growth and opportunity in the district. As a board, you have shared, the community members have shared, and external agencies, such as county council members, have shared the importance of community engagement, as well as regular data monitoring. If you look across those listed on the slide and read the examples identified in the report, you will notice they are interconnected. For example, the manner in which we engage our community and maintain a system of data collection, data monitoring, and data reporting connects with the theme of relational trust and communication. Ensuring that we engage in these practices and with coherence and in alignment throughout the district further influences relational trust. I will now turn it back to Ms. Sharon for the rest.
Okay, so we're going to wrap up a couple more slides, and then we're very eager to hear your feedback, reflections, and questions. So based on all the information that we gathered from the Phase I and Phase II reports, you can see, and this is loaded to board docs as well for our community that would like to print out a copy and look at it, you should have a copy in front of you as well. But these are the draft goals that we identified as a system. And what you can see here is, highlighted in red, are very specifically the parts of our goals that are definitely upgraded from our first strategic plan and directly related to what we learned from the anti-racist audit. We know, and I don't think you're going to find a strategic plan that says, that doesn't have something around preparing all students to be successful in college, career, and community, right? We know, I don't know any school district strategic plan that doesn't have something that says that. But what you see here is, and this is draft, again, that we're trying to build out, is look what's in red, reimagining the service delivery models, how we're actually servicing our students so that we're eliminating disparities. A transparent process that ensures all the strategies we're implementing to get students prepared are anti-racist. We need to develop that. That's a system and structure to get to those best practices. Again, I'm not going to read through this, but you can see, highlight some other items that you will see directly from the anti-racist audit. that you will see directly from the anti-racist audit when we take a look at Goal 3. We have, we actually very much intentionally added, based on the feedback from Phase 2, we know we want to invest in a diverse and high-quality workforce. That's very similar to our previous strategic plan. But what we actually see in the data is, we recruit, but how well are we retaining? That is where we are having some of the biggest issues. So we added, not just we're investing, but we're recruiting, developing, and retaining a workforce that reflects the diversity of our students, and building out what that looks like. For community, for Goal 4, around building strong partnerships with our families and our communities. Developing better anti-racist and culturally responsive systems to create and maintain the strong partnerships with families in our community. And then lastly, when we're thinking about operational excellence, the superintendent has hammered home in all of his conversations, and particularly with the feedback he's heard from the community, is reducing those bureaucratic layers. And when you're looking at his organizational structure, his whole organizational structure is focused on how we're collaborating and creating coherence across the district so that we could implement the strategic plan in a way that's consistent, so we can eliminate that fragmentation. And that is what he's really been focusing on. So again, focusing on that operational excellence is more than just saying, yeah, we got to make sure all the buses arrive on time. That's critically important, but how are we getting to the heart, to the systems that are going to transform outcomes for students? Next slide. That's me? I clicked that? So finally, we are now in the third phase. We just started the third phase of the strategic plan, and we had a work session about two weeks ago, we're still compiling the information from that, where we had about 60, 70 central office participants and staff come together to do two things. One, we made sure they unpacked that Phase 2 report, so they really understood what our community was saying to us around what needed to change for systems and structures. And then they worked on creating draft objectives, measurable objectives, to align with the goals of the strategic plan. We are in the process of compiling that. The reason you see these questions up here is that as they were working, and this was a full-day work session, as they developed the objectives, they had to justify any objective they identified by answering these questions. How is your recommended objective anti-racist? How does it specifically address the root causes and recommendations that we heard in the Phase 2 report? How does it connect to the Maryland Blueprint? Because we know that is a driving factor of accountability for us. And then, very specifically, because we hear this so much from our community, and we get this question a lot, how is this objective going to directly address the outcomes of our student groups? And those are the student groups that we highlighted in particular that we need to address based on what we know our data is communicating. So last slide, and then we will break for your questions, comments, feedback. Next step, so, you know, where are we going next? So we are working on compiling the recommended objectives to get them in some solid draft form. We then are going to send out and get feedback on both the draft goals that you see here today, as well as the draft objectives from the Phase 1, 2, and 3 participants, which is really about 500 participants. We're going to send that information back out, say, this is what we heard, what do you think on what we have drafted so far? We're then creating new committees in February to take our objectives and build out strategies to actually meet the goals that we've identified. And then, we're going to create culturally responsive opportunities for the community to provide feedback in April. And then, our goal is that the Board of Education will vote on the strategic plan in May, and then the hard work, as we said, happens where we actually need to create office-school improvement plans and structures and systems that align with the strategic plan outcome. And at that, I will turn it over to Ms. Wolf.
Okay, well, we've heard quite a lot. And I think since my fellow board members are kind of new, I'm going to take the liberty of asking the thousand questions, because I am very frustrated. I will be perfectly honest, as you know. I heard all my favorite terms, culturally responsive, equitable, anti-racist. We hear that all the time, but I'm not hearing what's going to really be different. I mean, Goal 1, it says reimagine service delivery. Well, we've been reimagining the whole six years I've been on the board, and I don't see anything different. I know you talk about implementation, being inconsistent. Well, we've kind of known that all along, too, but I don't know that that's really what's going to make the difference. I need to know what it is about these goals that's going to address the root causes that you found in Phase 2, particularly around systemic bias and inequities and in resource allocation. I'm just a little bit frustrated. And then I need rubics for evaluation, which I know that you totally cannot provide today, but you should know that I've got to have that. So with that, I also would just like to know, in the end, how will our parents know that anything different is going on? Because I think like myself, particularly for our Black and Brown community, these are the words we've been throwing around for years. I'm going to turn to Natalie. Rita first this time.
Thank you. I do want to acknowledge all of the work that I know goes into establishing these goals, holding these events so that the community can be involved, all the discussions and meetings that I know you all have to discuss these. But I do have to also echo the level of frustration. I have to be honest, when I hear these terms all over the place, to me, that's actually a red flag, because it makes it so clear that we must not be doing them. So I just have a sense of disappointment for us as a school system that this is where we're at. But this is where we're at, and I'm a very action-oriented person. And so I, too, want to see, what are the kitchen-table action items that parents can see? Because when I talk to the community, right, it's the information that parents are concerned about is, when I ask my child, how did school go today? Right? Those are the pieces I'm honed in on. Not that the other stuff isn't important or doesn't matter. It is, and as a board member, I know especially how much it matters. But as a parent, that's kind of what I'm really focused in on, right? And so what I also get concerned about in this discussion, and I'm just going to use one of my own communities, my Native American community is not present in this discussion, and there's probably a lot of reasons for that, too. But for the Latino community, I get concerned that when we have boxes, and here, there's a literal box that says Latino students, that we are then painting our Latino students with a broad swath. And so I know that we all know there are various types of Latino students and families and caregivers with different, all different kinds of challenges. And so for our families where perhaps English is not a challenge, are they captured here? For our parents for whom their children maybe are at grade level, and they're frustrated by a lack of enrichment or being able to get ahead, especially in our elementary school grades, are they captured here? Right? So I just want us to be mindful that even though we're creating these workgroups and categories with a mind, because we want to go to our community, and we want to say, no, please, you know, let us know what you need, and I do appreciate that, we can also sometimes have certain groups within that group get lost, for both our Latino students and our Black students as well. There are some schools where your Latino and Black students are not your farm students, and I'm not sure that everyone in the community understands that. So I just want to make sure that we are capturing all of the aspects of our communities, because we also need to make sure that our non-Black and Latino students are also captured in these goals as well. Because we have students across all demographics who are not at levels of proficiency, and at the end of the day, as a mom, I send my kids to school to learn.
So I have a question that is related to this, and it comes down to like how we see it in our schools. And part of what happened after the anti-racist audit was that we were asked in our school improvement plans to add anti-racist elements. And as I've looked through many different school improvement plans, I've pulled recently from different schools throughout the county, from elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, they vary drastically. And in a sense, they should, right? Each school should have their own school improvement plan, but in another sense, they vary so much that it's difficult to see, you know, from high school to high school, where they're getting these different elements, where it's anti-racist. Some of the things are, you know, as you say, our first goal, of course, is to prepare our students for college, career, and community, that a lot of those goals are really just about math data, literacy data, not about getting to, as you're showing us this iceberg, getting to those root causes and helping to address them. All of this to bring it back to, when we look at things, if we're giving us this action item, and I noticed that it didn't really show up in here, the school improvement plan, but it's an action item given to our schools, how are we supporting our leadership teams? How are we supporting our administrators in creating these? And then, relatedly, we're talking about the blueprint that shows up in here. In the blueprint, one of the things that it calls for in our community schools is developing and engaging our school councils. And admittedly, when I've asked and have gone to different schools, I know of a lot of PTAs, PTSAs, I don't really know of any school councils. What are we doing there if we're, you know, we're reaching out and engaging our communities? We should have that in every school. Where are we engaging them there? So I think we have, we're talking about these structures and these systems in place, maybe we're trying to reinvent the wheel, and we're also not following the blueprint. I'm sensing there's a lot of spinning our wheels and confusion here, instead of getting to some of the work that really needs to be done. So where are we in supporting the SIP, and where are we with our school councils?
So I don't have a complete question around, or answer around the school councils. You all had a lot of questions, and I'm going to say a couple things, and hopefully I'm addressing some of what everybody said. The first thing that I'm going to say is that the overarching strategic plan, okay, is, the goal of that is to set the district's North Star of what our focus needs to be. We're developing those specific objectives and strategies to get there, and that is work in progress that's going to align with that. And I think some of the things that you are asking will be reflected in there. It's also going to take time. This is not a one-year strategic plan. This is a five-to-seven-year strategic plan. So a lot of the work is yet to be done, as far as what is everything going to look like. To get to Ms. Montoya's comment around, and how I wrote it on my notes was, our groups are not monoliths. And that is, in essence, what came out in our Phase 2 work session. So I will venture to say that, yes, when we have our completed strategic plan, they should, we should see, everybody should be able to see themselves in it, because that was something that came out loud and clear. Frequently, we come from a deficit perspective when we're talking about certain groups, but the reality is, is that not everybody falls into the same category, even culturally within, right? We know that there's a lot of differences that we need to account for. Regarding school improvement planning, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues for additional comments. As far as school improvement planning, the school improvement planning journey is a one that has been a work in progress. They recently revamped the school improvement plan, like what, a year or so ago, as a result of the work of the audit? But you mentioned something, Ms. Zimmerman, which was really important, that we have to start shifting our thinking around. And that is saying that, oh, take your school improvement plan and make it more anti-racist. That's not how we should be looking at it. The planning for your school improvement plan should be anti-racist and equitable from the way you start planning. So equity should be the driver. It should not just be a component that you add on to make it better. So those are some of the ways that we have to restructure and reframe the way we're going about doing our business, and it is going to take time. But I do recognize, and I can't remember who said it now, but maybe it was Ms. Montoya, around the fact that, what am I going to see differently for my student? What is going to be different in the schools? And I think that we are going to need to think about how we're communicating that clearly, but I also want to communicate that this is a long-term plan, and it's not something that we're going to adopt in May, and there's going to be, it's going to be miraculously, everything is going to be fixed by September. Do you want to add?
Well, I appreciate that, and I know this is not an easy task. And I think what is particularly frustrating for me is systemic bias and structural inequities. I mean, how do you measure that? What kind of goals should we set? And what is that really going to look like? How are we going to know when we have achieved success in that area? Because we've been throwing around those terms forever, and I believe that a lot of our students don't feel comfortable and welcome in our buildings, their parents don't feel comfortable and welcome. And until their parents do, a lot of this isn't going to change, because until they feel they can have a conversation with the teacher and understand how they can help the student, a lot of this isn't going to change. That's just my frustration. Those, and you've identified it as a root cause, so I'm just waiting to see how you're going to measure that. I see.
Just briefly. Yeah, because I have some same concerns. I mean, even just in general, even when we're talking about hate bias in our schools and things like that, what we're doing seems to not be working, obviously, so that's why we're coming up with this new strategic plan, right? But when we're then deciding what these actions are going to be, you know, are we going to keep, for example, perhaps it's that the staff training, yes, we're training our staff, but what are we using to train our staff? Right? Because if we're just going to keep carrying on these same things that we're doing, because, well, of course, we want to train our staff to be anti-racist, anti-Black, about hate bias, but is that working? And we can say, well, maybe there's less incidents, but if our students and families don't feel comfortable going into their spaces, or if they don't feel like they have adults in the school building that look like them, that understand when they explain something, that contributes to them not feeling like they're included in these spaces, and then how do we even measure that? If they're not even coming to the table to fill out the survey, perhaps, that you're sending, because we just don't feel like this is a space for us to begin with.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to kind of echo my colleague's statements, that I appreciate that this is not an overnight situation, right? It would be lovely that we could snap our fingers and have it all fixed, but we're realistic. That's not how it's going to work. But I think about the ninth grader, if we're thinking about this in a five-to-seven years, the ninth grader right now that is facing racism every day in their school, that's never going to be fixed when they leave MCPS, if we're saying, well, we'll have it fixed in seven years. There needs to be some sort of action that's happening now, and I think about Ms. Montoya's point, when our students are coming home, and they're sharing how was their day, there is some, there's reality to that. And, you know, each kid only gets one shot at every school year, right? They get one chance to be in third grade, one chance to be in 11th grade, and how are we thinking about their day-to-day, and how are we? This is urgent work, is my point.
So I think we're going to move on now. I think you've heard some of our comments and what we're thinking. So we'll look forward to the next report to see how we're coming along. Thank you.
Okay, we bring the, oh, I'm the slide person. Forgot again. Okay. Okay, I'm now going to bring the next group of individuals up for our restorative justice update.
And please ask them, please introduce yourself.
So we have, they're going to come up? I think, Brenda?
So, good afternoon. Steve Neff, Director of Pupil Personnel and Attendance Services.
Good afternoon. Shawna K. Jordan-Bay, Director of Student Engagement and Behavioral Health.
Good afternoon. My name is Brenda Brown. Unfortunately, our Associate Superintendent of Special Education, Diana Wiles, cannot be with us this afternoon, and so I am here in her place to share the information. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, good afternoon, and I always appreciate the opportunity to have a dialogue with you around chronic absenteeism. I want to start out by sharing some data. Before I do, a couple of things about these data. One is, these data are pulled from the Chronic Absenteeism Data Dashboard, and so therefore are unofficial data in that these may not be the exact end-of-year data that is shared with the state, and Dr. Addison could probably elaborate further, by understanding there is some cleanup involved that, before it goes to the state. But the data do not fundamentally change, so I think they can still be used to gauge our progress. So this first slide just shows, first slide on the left, the data, the graph on the left just shows moving progressively to lower and lower chronic absenteeism rate, based on how we ended the year, '22, '23, and then '23, '24, and how we were sitting on January 15th. The second thing that I did want to say about the data is, these data that I pulled for the purposes of this and the next two slides were pulled the week before last, and that is a pretty important distinction, and I'll share a little bit about sort of the why behind that. The second graph on this just shows, one of the, I guess, bellwethers that we look at is the number of schools that are 25% or more of their students are chronically absent, and we ended last school year with 68 schools, so a little less than a third, or maybe roughly a third. a third. And at, at a data poll on a couple of Fridays ago, it was at 40. So we are pleased with that progress. You can go to the next slide, please. So now, these data on this slide and the next are pulled directly from the data dashboard, and so they are able to compare where we were on the same day last school year versus where we were on the date of the poll. So for example, if January 14th was the 84th day of school, then the blue bar would represent what the 84th day of school looked like during the 2023, 2024 school year.
Steve, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can I, can you go back to your previous slide?
Please, sure.
I just have a question. So you're telling me we have 40 schools where one-fourth of the school is absent?
That is correct.
Are they high school, middle school? Do you know?
They are, several of them are, most of them, most of the separate special education day schools are the case, and, and you can understand why that might be the case, because of medical needs. And then I would say a significant number of those 40 are our secondary schools.
Can, can, you get that information to me?
Absolutely.
Which schools are involved? Thank you.
Yeah, no, I actually generate that office, that data on a weekly basis for my associate and for the principal supervisor, so I'm happy to do that. So, and as you can see, based on your question, Ms. Wolf, the chronic absenteeism rate at the high school level is over 25% across all 25 of our high schools. So looking at this slide, I will just note that while the high school data remains high, last school year, we made significant gains pre-K through eight. We did not make gains in high school last year. Last year in high school, our chronic absenteeism rate was, I think, .56% higher than it was the year before. So pushing it down about 2% is, is moving in the right direction. And then the next slide just shows our various ethnic groups, as well as our service groups. And again, we have certain groups that are disproportionately represented in terms of how high their chronic absenteeism rate, but at the time of these data poll, they, their reduction was at the highest compared to some of our other levels. I had mentioned that these data were pulled the week before last, and so there is reason for concern, because as we know, last week, there was a significant weather event, and there was a significant political event. And so across the board, we are concerned about what the rhetoric coming out of Washington is going to do to impact, you know, families' willingness to send their children to school and older children's willingness to come to school. And we're seeing some of that in our early data, and it's not on the slides, because it literally was pulled today. And we're hopeful that some of that has to do with last week, you know, bitter cold temperatures, two out of the four days, two-hour delays. They always impact attendance broadly. But we also know that the fear from our immigrant community is there as well. So just as sort of a frame of reference, on December 18th, which was roughly a couple of days before winter break, MCPS's chronic absenteeism rate was down 3 and 3/4% from where it was at that time last school year. The data poll this morning, we're only 2 and 1/2%, still below, but only, we lost about a quarter, 1 and 1/4% for all of MCPS.
Can I just ask you to define chronic absenteeism?
Yeah.
For our new board members?
Sure, thank you for that. I, I usually don't miss the opportunity to that. So chronic absenteeism is 10% of the days in which you're enrolled, regardless of the reason. So that means excused or unexcused. So broken down even farther, that, further, that is two days a month, 18 days a school year. So we are approaching the 89th, 90th day of the school year, coming up at the end of the, we are finishing today, the end of the first semester. So anybody with nine or more absences is chronically absent today. If those students with exactly nine absences come to school the next few days, they will not be chronically absent. So that is a very fluid number. Also, I just wanted to note that we were making significant gains with our Latino and Hispanic population. On December 18th, their overall pre-K to 12 chronic absenteeism rate was 6.01% below where it was the same time last school year. That has dropped to 3.63%. And our emergent multilingual learners were at 5.13% at a data poll in December, and the data poll yesterday, they are at 2.53%. So it, it, the, certainly the impact of the weather has something to do with it, but we're also very concerned about, you know, what the messages have been to our immigrant families. So the next slide, so what are we doing? What have we been doing to reduce our chronic absenteeism rates, and what do we hope to do to continue that? And the answer to that question is lots of things. There is no one silver, single strategy, I was going to say silver bullet, there is no single strategy that is going to make a single, it is lots of, of different strategies. It starts with that positive messaging, and if I could be indulged, I think we have like a minute video that maybe we can share, and I want to credit Shella Cherry and her team, and the students that, that are working with her, just to share, this is one example of positive messaging. If we could show that video?
Uh, comms has to do it.
Comms, thank you.
I show up to school because I want to graduate.
I show up to school because I like my English class.
I show up for vans.
I show up because I don't want to miss out.
I show up to school because I want to go to college.
I show up to represent you.
Your wife went up to the family.
Because I have a test today.
I show up because this is my favorite class.
I show up every day because I want to be ready for my career right after high school.
So thank you for that. So students will listen to students more often than sometimes they will listen to a, a white guy in a suit telling them that they need to come to school every day. But I think that's just an example of, you know, just the positive messaging that we are trying to communicate about the importance of daily school attendance. Similarly, it's the messaging that the superintendent and that the rest of MCPS, and really the Montgomery County community, is trying to send to our families about our schools being safe and, and being welcoming for all, and not letting some of the messaging or some of the, the language coming out of DC and, and politics really causing people to feel uncomfortable and unwelcome. We continue to need to reflect, Ms. Wolf, you mentioned, you know, welcomed, if people, families feeling welcomed in school, I would add safe, I would add seen, I would see, add valued, I would seen, heard. We need to, whether it's at the principal level, or the classroom level, at the OSSI director level, at the system level, we should always be asking ourselves, what is it about the culture and climate of our schools and classrooms? What is it about the safety of our schools and classrooms that impact student attendance positively, or impacts student attendance negatively? So continuing just the reflection that the anti-racist audit, you know, leads us to do. We believe in frequent, early, supportive outreach to families. We have remind messages that come out through synergy, and if there are questions about this during the discussion, I do understand that some of you may have heard about those messages, perhaps frustration from families who receive those, saying, I let the school know, why am I getting this message? And this, we made a decision that we want to over-communicate. We specifically mention in those messages that this is a system message, that these include excused and unexcused absences, and you may have contacted your school. And then it goes on to use language like, we miss your child when they're not in school, is there anything we can do to help? And so at this point in time, we're continuing to send those messages out to families at certain thresholds each quarter, because again, over-communication in a positive, supportive way, we think is valuable, because there's a lot of research that shows that parents often misinterpret, or they, they do not understand the breadth or extent of a student's absences. So there's research that shows, if you ask a parent how many days that their child missed school, their answer would be wrong by about half or double, however you want to look at it. So we, we, we're pushing that message out there. We also, the Chronic Absenteeism Data Dashboard really has been a great boon to this work. It became officially, official in use in March, and, and just huge kudos to the team that set it up, because it allows analysis at every level, at the central office. These data that I pulled in the previous two slides, I'm looking at them daily, every other day at the most. On a weekly basis, I'm sending da, uh, data to my superintendent to share with principal supervisors that show these data, that, that identify schools that are trending in ways that should be looked at. At the school level, when they go into the data dashboard, it pulls up names of individual students, it tells how those students are trending from an attendance standpoint over the last 30 days, and then it lets every school slice and dice their data by their grade levels, by their service groups, by their racial groups. And so they can really look at, we're doing, we've reduced our chronic absenteeism rate by 3% across all of our school, but let's look at how we're doing with our different groups, and what outreach and intervention do we need to do with those groups where the data suggests that we do that. And then we are, continue to have times when students and families have barriers to attending regularly. We don't need any more barriers, yet we have another one, you know, coming up with our immigrant families feeling unsafe in our communities. But there are so many different reasons why students miss school, that if we, if we tried to throw out a blanket intervention or approach, it would have zero success. So we rely on our attendance data monitoring teams, we rely on our student well-being teams to engage in collaborative problem-solving around individual students and families, to really, you know, all of those staff members around the student well-being team, one or two people know that student's and that family's story. And what is that story? What are the barriers? And then how can we identify or use targeted interventions to address those barriers? Because each, like I said, every student who has an attendance issue has a different story, so how we intervene with them has to be tailored to what we learn about that story. Next slide, please. I think another, or a next level of work in MCPS around student attendance, and I think this really does apply at the high school level, although it can apply to all three levels, is really about engagement or disengagement, you know, just figuring out why our older students, or really why any students are not engaging in school. If they are feeling inadequate from an academic or a learning standpoint, they, what's the point? They give up. If they don't feel like they have connections or relationships with their teachers, they start to resist their teachers, they start to react, you know, in the classrooms. If they don't have, you know, a connection to school, whether it's friends in a classroom, or whether it's any type of extracurricular club or other activity, then they feel isolated and alienated. So when you think of the words after the equal signs, give up, react, resist, isolated, alienated, those do not lend themselves to students wanting to drag themselves out of bed very, very early for high school students, you know, cold, dark mornings in the winter and get to school. So how do we try to reengage them? Next slide. And it's the same thing I said when I talked about intervention, it's lots of different ways, and it's targeted. And so we need to, we need to meet with students and families and individuals, what is going on with you? What are the barriers? What support do you need? If we have students who are known for not coming to school, or being hallwalkers while they're in school, what can we do to engage you, to change that reputation of you, and just give you an opportunity to be a more productive and safe learner in the school building? We have lots of different, you know, student well-being team staff members in schools, and with agency partners in schools. So how do we find ways to wrap around some well-being support for students who need it? Students learn differently. I think Ms. Sharon had a slide that said, we've been doing things the same way for a long time, and our students and families have changed. You know, I will argue the same thing with how we offer up school. Not every student, many, many students, don't respond to what we think of in high school, where they go to seven 49-minute classes, and they, you know, four minutes in between to get, and the subjects are distinct in nature. So where can we find opportunities to create learning that is, that accounts better for their differences? I mentioned extracurricular clubs, just that, when students are involved in clubs, sports, other activities, they are much more engaged in school, their grades go up, their attendance go up. And then it's easy to throw this phrase out, but we talk about unconditional positive regard. Like, we need to let students know that they're missed when they're not in school. And if you think about the difference, and this will be the last thing I say before we, I open it up to questions, is if a student who hasn't been into school for a long time shows up, and a front office staff member and a teacher says, oh, look, Steve bothered to show up today, why did you decide to grace us with your presence? Versus, Steve, I'm very glad you're here, missed you the last couple of days, what can we do to get you, you know, up and running in class today, or in school today? Huge difference. And a huge difference in how that student is going to choose, you know, what decision they're going to make the next morning, when they're thinking, do I want to go to school, or do I not want to go to school? So I'll acknowledge that a lot of this is philosophical, but the philosophical leads to, like, the work that is done in the school by all of the staff members. Next slide.
Thank you for the.
I was going to say, discussion.
Thank you for the discussion. This has been an ongoing challenge.
Yes.
For sure. One question, mine isn't about absenteeism, because the numbers are what they are, and while they're going down, they're not really great, but they are going down. What do we do about truancy? Are we, do we have any initiatives on truancy? And is truancy in these absenteeism numbers on?
Well, if you are truant, you are 100% chronically absent, because truancy, the definition of truance is 20% or more unexcused. So we, there is still a truancy review board, I run it. We still have a relationship with the state's attorney's office, and we still have the capacity to charge families when they don't send their children to school. I can tell you that we use it in very rare circumstances, and I will tell you, what, I think the most significant reason is that breaks relationships. So once you say, we're referring you to the truancy review board, or certainly, we are going to take you to court, any verbiage like, and we want to still continue to collaborate with you around your child's attendance, I don't think that's heard. And so it breaks relationships. So it needs to be a severe and significant incident to do that. And then the other, and I say this as the person who runs the program, it really, it doesn't work. It doesn't make the difference that we think it would, because in the end, the truancy process hangs over the head of parent, it's a parent-driven process, first and foremost. So there are no truancy laws for a 15- or 16-year-old, it is for the parent of a 15- or 16-year-old. And it really, what it does, it just holds over, you are legally obligated to do this, and bad things could happen legally if you don't. And so that, that may work with some families, but we feel like, what are your barriers, and how can we partner with you to address those barriers? We feel like that yields better results.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to turn to Ms. Zimmerman. I'm going to ask you, if at all possible, one question at a time, because I have a hard stop at three.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you. So one of the places that you're saying that we can see success with our students is getting them into extracurricular activities, and then we're seeing less chronic absenteeism. So then what barriers are we facing into getting them into extracurriculars then? Or are they structural? Like, tell me more, what barriers?
I think it's a variety. I think awareness of the variety of them that are available. I think awareness of the variety of them that are available. So I think people understand sports and they understand, you know, theater and orchestra, but they may not have an awareness of a variety of different clubs and things. So I know that our high schools and probably our middle schools are doing outreach to sort of explain what those things are. I also think that sometimes the ability, frankly, the ability to come to school in person during the regular school day, I think, is a luxury for some students who might have other family responsibilities. And certainly, when you talk about something, if it were to be in addition to the school day, I think some, whether it is watching siblings so that their parents can work or working so that they can contribute, sometimes it is, those are barriers. And so I know, you know, some schools try to do within-school clubs and activities during certain periods of the days, so that that can be another level of engagement beyond the mere, and it's not, I'm not minimizing, but the simple engagement in the academic classes.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing up that reality for so many of our students as well. If there are any of our secondary schools in particular that are doing a great job of engaging their kids in extracurricular activities, I'd love to hear more.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. You mentioned looking at absenteeism rates for Latino students, and I believe you said EML students in the, in the past, you know, month or two, based on changes in our political environment. And again, and I'm asking this because I really want to caution us about presenting our groups as monoliths. Are you also looking at Asian students? Are you also looking at Black students, which would capture our African students? We had a wonderful presentation not too long ago in front of Special Populations Committee about the true diversity of all of the students that make up our emerging multilingual learners. And I say this because when we don't capture all of our student groups, we miss out on providing them with support. Our immigrant students come from many, many different backgrounds and we want to make sure that we are providing the public with an accurate picture and then also not saying, right, we shouldn't be equating Latino students with immigrants. We shouldn't be equating emerging multilingual learners with immigrants or vice versa. So I just really want to make sure we're talking about being anti-racist. We're talking about equity not being an add-on, but being infused and driving these systems and processes. It has to start here at the board.
No, I appreciate that. And I apologize, you know, if I wasn't clear in my third data slide. If, like, these are the data points that we have access to pull. But you're correct, they are not monoliths, but they are, you know, they are reflective of student groups as they, we ask them to identify themselves as part of our student information system that we, we choose to monitor. But you're right, the, the interventions and the outreach, it is not a one-size-fits-all approach for any of those groups.
Right. And what I'm saying here, though, is when you're specifically talking about monitoring only certain groups to see whether or not they're afraid to come to school because of potential immigration consequences or impacts or whatnot, the language we use here in the boardroom matters.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. One question, though. You know, the government changed the categories for collecting data. We've never changed our categories. And I think they did that by breaking out Africans from, you know, I don't have it in front of me, but there is a different category so that now it does some of what Rita was talking about.
And that's in process. There, there is work groups coming together because the state of Maryland is going to be, there's a whole process where they're trying to align with, you know, the new FAFSA, where they broke them out more. So that will be coming down the line. I don't have a timeline yet, but that will be coming.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask you to move on now because, as I said, we do have a hard stop today. And this is a really important area that we're coming up on.
Good afternoon, everyone. Once again, my name is Shauna K. Jormby. I'm the Director of Student Engagement and Behavioral Health. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today to talk to you a little bit about suspensions. And I am going to do my best to power through. So I just wanted to go to the beginning to give an overall impression of suspensions. So MCPS has maintained an overall suspension rate of about 1.4% for the last two years and is on track to have similar suspension rates this year. The numbers are close. Suspensions in general have been in decline post-COVID, but that's for a number of reasons. Enhanced policies, enhanced enforcement, an increase in post-COVID spending supports through some of our federal monies and increased structures around a number of initiatives, including restorative approaches. MCPS currently has the lowest, and I checked, lowest suspension rates in the state. And has for a little bit now. I think the next closest is Garrett County and Howard County does pretty well in this area as well. So by comparison, the suspension rates for all of our local education authorities, all of our districts, they hover around 5%. So a 1.4 suspension rate is, is pretty significant. And it does connect to a lot of other initiatives. So we talk about the importance of first instruction and the importance of that for students. And we also just spoke about attendance initiatives, including chronic absenteeism, for which absences by suspensions do count. They are counted in the number of days that allow our students to be chronically absent or not. We talked about connections and building those relationships with students, building positive and pro-social attendance habits. Again, suspensions do impact this. In spite of all those great things that I'm really proud of Montgomery County Public Schools for, there are some things that require a deeper level of analysis and, of course, much deeper work. So I want to point out three specific lenses. The first one is discretionary. So discretionary suspensions are administered by school admin by using judgment or discretion rather than an automatic requirement. These suspensions are most subject to bias because they might not be applied the same depending on where you are, who you are, and what some of the factors are. So they're discretionary. So we have to watch those carefully because we will see trends that indicate possible bias. The second one is disparities. And this is really general. Disparities are simply the differences in how suspensions are applied across groups. For example, we know about 76% of our suspensions are of students who receive free and reduced meals. So we know there's, there are disparities in socioeconomic status. There are also disparities by gender. We know that boys receive more suspensions than girls, about 67%, about 33%. So we have to watch those carefully because in some of our disparities, there may be indications of other needs. And then the last one is a more technical term when we talk about this for the state of Maryland. It's suspensions that are disproportionate. When we talk about this for MCPS, it refers specifically to the suspensions of African-American students with IEPs as compared to other groups. And so there's a special education lens there that is a focus as well as a racial lens. So I'm going to talk about these three areas. In spite of our successes, the focus lenses are really important because it's where we have our deepest challenges. Next slide, please. All right. So a little bit more about discretionary suspensions and give a clearer example. So again, discretionary suspensions are subject to judgment. The first one is called insubordination. It does not have its own disciplinary code because a few years ago, insubordination was determined to be a form of disrespect. So under the disrespect category, insubordination or refusal to comply is included. Disrespect only goes up to a level three within the Code of Conduct. So the highest level of consequence that you can give there is an in-school suspension. So it is a removal from the classroom, but not a removal from the building. The second type of discretionary suspension is called disruption. This one is going to be the most complex and we'll get into it a little bit more when we talk about the numbers. Disruption can range from a level five, a level one, all the way to a level five, which includes expulsion. And it's often a suspension that we see as double-coded. Double-coded means that there's another violation often attached to it. And so we have to be cautious with this, right? What one principal considers a disruption, another principal may not. And so again, careful watch of our discretionary suspensions because they may indicate trends in bias. Next slide, please. So let's take a look. So we have suspensions here represented from school year 2223, last school year 2324, and our current school year up until January 17th. These are to the date as of now, so comparing the same or similar period of time. In 2223, at this time in the year, we had about 71 suspensions for disrespect. 11 last year, and as of today, about two suspensions for disrespect. And part of the success in that is increased monitoring. We monitor suspensions on a daily basis and then we send out a report on a weekly basis. Some do still slip through. Disruption, again, a broad category, which we'll break down in a little bit. In 2223, about 245 by this time this year, 87 last year. Great improvements in terms of monitoring. And then 122 this year. Please note that the Code of Conduct broadened the definition of disruption just last year. So some of that is due to that. Other pieces of that is due to messaging. And we're set to send out messaging to our principals again at the end of this semester, which is happening now, in order to like reset and remind, send reminders about what can qualify or quantify as disruption and how to limit multi-code suspensions. So we are, you know, hoping to, to sustain some of the improvements that we saw last year. By the end of the year, we do have a little bit of an increase there. But overall, really proud of the changes we've made in discretionary. Next slide, please. All right. So we were asked for a closer breakdown of what constitutes a discretionary suspension. And this was really interesting. When we're looking at disrespect, a lot of the time, staff members put in for profane language. So we're talking about curse words and things of that nature that people would consider disrespectful, not only in word or in person, but also we've seen a few by email. Student wrote XYZ in email, it was really disrespectful, et cetera. And that often falls under disrespect. We've seen like inappropriate language or threatening language. So maybe not full-out threats, but what people would consider posturing or intimidation, we see that. Instigating often comes up in the category for disruption. So those encouraging conflict, even sometimes recording, although recording often falls under inappropriate use of technological devices. So again, another double code when it comes to disruption. For our younger kids, we see a lot of notes on emotional regulation. Erratic behavior, temper tantrums, elevated emotional states, turning over a trash can, maybe verbal outbursts, getting upset, right? We also see with our, some of our younger kids eloping, our older kids skipping or refusing to stop, refusing to comply, refusing to stay in a particular area. A little bit for disruption in, at the high school level in particular, letting trespassers in the building, again, refusal to comply. And then finally, hate bias incidents. Because hate bias is not a standalone code within the Code of Conduct. We do not decide that, the state decides that. It is often attached to another code. So if someone did a hateful symbol that was broadly viewed by a school community, that would have caused a disruption in the building. And that's at times where disruption, though subjective, could be a standalone code. Next slide, please. All right. So here are the suspension data specifically for discretionary suspensions only disaggregated by year. And you'll find that mirrors some of the data that was shared on an earlier slide, just by number. Again, the improvements that were made between '24 and '23, we're hoping to sustain those improvements. We've got a little bump up, but generally, they're in the, the same place or similar place. Next slide, please. All right. So what are some of the best practices or what are some of the high-level strategies or high-leverage strategies that we've used to address disproportionality? One of them at the high school level is going to be the use of our well-being social workers. They are placed at our high schools. There are some assigned to middle schools, 21 middle schools, and some that serve elementary schools by referrals. But they have served 3,086 students for check-in support or referral service between July 1st and January 17th. So with a lot of our discretionary suspensions, we're talking about emotional regulation. We're talking about instigation. We're talking about some level of, of conflict. So having someone to go to, to be able to help support and manage some of those things has been really important. Attached to that is our Bridge to Wellness Services, again, connected to our high school social works, social workers who are the liaisons for those external services and our wellness centers. They've been able to provide 483 students just from well-being team referrals, service, and even more through self-service, self-referrals. And then our restorative approaches coaches. Our coaches differ from our specialists. Our coaches are assigned at each and every school with a stipend. It's not a very big stipend, but it does allow us a point of contact at each school. It does allow us a point of contact for training, for PLCs to come to each school. So that stipend is about $1,200 for elementary school and $2,400 for high school. It allows for 48 hours of service for our elementary schools and 96 at our high school. And as you know, two years ago, that stipend was $6,000 and $3,000. We had some budget reductions last year. But the cohort overall is doing a wonderful job in attending PLC and serving their schools. They provide professional learning onsite and a limited amount of onsite support. And we're pushing for local support at each and every school. We're just limited in terms of what that service looks like in terms of capacity to, to kind of fund that. Several schools on their own through other funds, whether Title I, community schools, et cetera, through independent funding, have funded their own restorative approach teacher or coach full-time. Watkins Mill Elementary School is a good example of that. And there are about four or five that have done that this year. Next slide, please. In addition to that, our restorative approaches specialists, of which we have eight, do serve schools by cluster and assist those coaches in real-time job-embedded professional development in modeling, in supporting by providing PD to school teams, in working on the DISPRO action plans for special education supports, in helping to support with our reactive school action plans, of which there are five schools this year, and really working with our school staff to increase capacity locally. We also want to point out that at eight, all eight of their focus schools, which are all middle schools, that suspensions are down overall at all eight of those schools. And specifically, DISPRO suspensions for disruption are down 70%. Specifically to discretionary suspension, suspensions for disrespect are down 44%. And those schools are Shady Grove, Odessa Shannon, Loiderman, Lakeland Ski, Briggs Janey, and Holly Wells. Another thing that is really important to this work is dedicated monitoring, feedback, and training. So we've noted and you can see over the last few years, what is monitored, we can respond to, responding to principals in real time with real feedback, real training, real updates. To Steve's point earlier, he did talk about that data being raw data. I want to share with you that this is also raw data and that data does go through a cleanup process before it's reported to the state. So removals of duplications, which sometimes happen if two people put in the same incidents, things like that. So we monitor the raw data. And then you'll hear a little bit more about CCEIES, the Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services, and the action plans that they develop and support in order to specifically address disproportionate suspension, which is our suspension of our African-American students with IEPs as compared to all other groups. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brendan Brown to talk to you a little bit about disproportionality and CCEIES.
So good afternoon again, board members. I am here to talk about disproportionality with respect to the Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services. So just let's start at the basics. What is it? It is required by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And it monitors the racial disproportionality in three areas. Discipline, suspensions. Identification, so identification by disability category, we look at that as well. And placement, are we placing more of a different student ethnic or racial demographic in general or special centers, special schools, and et cetera? And when we are identified in one or more of these categories, we, as the LEA, our Local Education Agency, are required to take 15% of our special education budget and remove it from supporting our students who have special education services, to use those funds to... to address the problem in the general education environment. So, right now, MCPS is in CCEIS status for over-identifying, over-suspending our Black and African-American students with IEPs. So when we talk about what are we doing to address disproportionality in discipline, again, it is a range of things. We first try to do it through the policy route, reviewing of our Code of Conduct. As Shawna K. Jorbe has said, we have changed some of the areas in which we can identify for suspensions. And we also are taking a look at our Functional Behavior Assessment, FBA, and Behavior Intervention Process policies. Are we writing appropriately or proactively our FBAs and BIPs? Are we monitoring them? Those are some of the things that we are looking at at the policy level. And when we talk about professional learning, again, Shawna K. shared about that dysregulation piece. Do we have our security assistants, administrators, teachers, par educators? Can they de-escalate a situation as opposed to contributing to, unknowingly, escalating the situation? So we are providing professional learning on de-escalation strategies and through the Crisis Prevention Institute, CPI, classroom culture training, professional learning. So those are some of the professional learning aspects of how we are trying to address CCEIS. And then when we take a look at what the interventions that we are utilizing, relationship mapping. I already know you're going to ask me a question, what is that? So I'm going to tell you what it is right now. So that's really taking a look at the students in the school and mapping who has support from where. So if Ms. Zimmerman, we're looking at this, and Ms. Zimmerman, oh, goodness gracious, she doesn't have a trusted adult. So we're going to find you a trusted adult. Whereas Ms. Wolf or Ms. Montoya, oh, well, you've got a lot of in-school support, you're in professional learn, you're in some sort of after-school activity, and you love the yearbook coordinator. And so that's relationship mapping, okay? We also have a summer initiative, and that summer initiative, allow me to turn the page, that summer initiative is really focusing on, in the summertime, those foundational proactive strategies for the, that the student needs before the school year begins, to build those relationships so that we, if we want to decrease the likelihood of disciplinary removals throughout the school year. And then our social-emotional learning materials. Some of it is book study materials for the staff, and some of it is the implementation of the Zones of Regulation. And that is a program where students are taught how to really think about where I am, what am I doing, am I in the green zone, and those types of things. So it's really an opportunity to help students do that metacognition, thinking about their thinking, thinking about their feelings, and knowing what they need to do next. If we could move on to the next slide. So we have currently in our CCEIS grant, three goals. Number one, we want to overall reduce the total number of suspensions for our Black or African-American students. And in the data that you see is reflected in our most recent progress report, overall, there has been a 13.8% decrease. But because of the overall reduction in those suspensions, our Black and African-American students look more disproportionate as a result in the suspensions. Everybody with me on that one? Our second goal, we want to just eliminate the double-dippers and the triple-dippers, you know, the children who are repeatedly suspended. And so we have seen a 12.5% decrease in those students with the multiple suspensions. And we are very proud to share that that is a reduction of 22.5% from the 2022-2023 school year. Our third goal is to really increase, excuse me, decrease the suspensions of Black or African-American students who receive special education services in the socially-emotional special education services. And so we want to really share with you that we've seen a decrease in the suspensions of those students in those services. And that is really a testament to the staff and the school, the school members working in those services. We are hopeful that the professional learning and strategies that we have provided not only decreases the overall suspension of that particular student group, but then it trickles down to supporting the decrease in suspension of our Black or African-American students in these services. Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation, and as you know, this is my special area of interest.
Yes, ma'am.
Regrettably, though, we're almost out of time, and I know if my fellow board members are like me, they have quite a few questions about this. So what I'm going to ask you to do is to bring it back to the next strategic planning meeting. In fact, we might have to have an extra meeting because I think this is a little longer discussion than we actually allow time for. I will allow them to go ahead and ask any question they have now, and I will just simply say, we really have to look at these soft categories of under-discretionary because it's just too much wiggle room in there, too much ability for subjectivity in my mind. So do you have a question right now? Go ahead.
Since we're talking about coming back, I actually have an information request for next time when we come back. So we were talking about the schools that are funding their own full-time restorative approach teachers, right, through their direct school funding instead of district funding. I would love to see more information on, right, the success that we might be seeing with those schools since you presented, that we're seeing success in the district-supported schools. Thank you.
Ms. Montoya?
I just have a quick request for information also, and it's a continuing request. It's nice to be able to see at what levels these suspensions are, right? So if we're talking elementary school versus high school, middle school, because I think sometimes the approaches might be different, the behaviors might be different. So it's, I would like to just kind of see what we're talking about here. Thank you so much.
Finally, I just want to say that, and I say this all the time, these numbers look awfully low compared to what I just even see on TikTok, you know? So I don't know about my fellow board members, but I'm having a little hard, a hard time believing that this is all that we're seeing in suspensions, really.
No, it's not. These are, the numbers that were shared were just for discretionary suspensions. We still maintain about 3,000 suspensions a year. Most suspensions, just like nationally, are going to be in your conflict categories of attack or fighting, right? So discretionaries are not in attack or fighting, but the reason that they're a little bit more important is because if two kids fight, it's like clear, like they fought. But if someone felt disrespected, it's less clear. It depends on who you are, how you take it, there are a number of factors. So discretionary is important because it is most prone to bias, but it doesn't mean those other categories are not important as well.
Yeah, but it also has hate bias in these numbers, and that's what's kind of throwing me off, too, because the numbers that we're getting information on seem a lot higher than the numbers that you're reporting.
Yes, so hate bias falls in all categories. So these are the disruptions that have hate bias, but you have people that coded hate bias under bullying, that coded hate bias under assault, that coded hate bias under threat. So hate bias is an interesting category because it is not a standalone, it's attached to multiple categories. So it doesn't mean that what you see for disruption is solely hate bias. It is a unique, non-standalone category. It has to be attached to another offense.
I'd like to have further discussion on that, and I look forward to you, Ms. Brown, I think you're last name. I look forward to you coming back to the next meeting and furthering this discussion. So thank you, everyone. We appreciate everything you did today.